A couple months ago, I was like, oh, okay.
Yeah, no, you know why?
No, it was ruled along very speedily.
Well, the other thing I found with township meetings, when I first started going to them, they had lots of handouts. So that the public could look at things and know what's going on. And I watched it online periodically. And it's just like, you guys approved your budget. Well, nobody in the audience ever sees any document to have any clue what's going on.
There used to be handouts.
So what I've asked for, so little little steps at little times, right?
Yeah.
So what I have Wendy, Terry, in theory Mickey's supposed to do, so each group. And yours comes to me from, uh, like the zoning committee ones comes from me from like, uh, was it PMC, CNA, whatever, something like that. But I got them the really short summary, about this format. What is it that you were working on? What are the, the five key priorities? And that's a separate sheet. And I would, my thoughts can make that into something you can hand out to the public.
Yeah.
I don't necessarily wanna, I mean, I'm in favor of not wasting a ton of paper.
Right.
But, uh, you know, so I'm with you on that one. I'll, I'll, I'll put that up as something to use for a turn.
Yeah.
Sort of like going to church and not being able to read the handover of readings, you know?
I like to read.
I know, they did, they used to do that.
Uh, yeah.
So let's try another candidate, that won't be here.
Okay, so just go with the floor. Yes. Yeah.
She's nervous.
I'm picturing her.
How you doing? Minutes, I don't know. Yeah, I thought Ken was, and he said he might be here. He was traveling. And he, you're down that kind of.
Did I just make it? Seven twenty nine.
You're a fun guy.
You're all good. We're ten phones just to.
You won't get penalized, yeah.
Good. Just only here on time because my husband said, aren't you supposed to go to a meeting?
Well, actually, no, we did, so that's me yesterday. Oh, yeah, that's the truth. Thank you.
Oh, good.
We don't have children, don't we?
What's that?
We don't have the backlights.
Yeah, they just, they come on. We're just kind of a dimness.
We're just here to chat. So we don't know chat.
Okay, so there. They call me in order and then you can assess the attendings.
All right. Rich Luquette.
There.
Luther Ridge.
Here.
Barbara Rupert. Peter Bowman.
Yes, here.
Dominic Picarelli.
Here.
Okay, and we know Ken's not here.
Yes.
And we have, which we, can I just get the names of people we have, or did people sign in? I don't know.
Lee Royer.
But, yeah, okay, that's the.
Mitch Andrew and Mitch Andrew Senior, and then this is my girlfriend Danielle.
Okay. And who are my guests here with, I guess, um?
With the whole front.
Live on five twenty two Water Street, uh, have the other house at twenty seventy five Bullfrog.
Twenty seventy, and that's the one, okay. All right, thanks.
So did everybody have a chance to read the minutes from October? And are there any required or suggested changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Or maybe we don't approve them.
A second, I wasn't here, but I have a second.
No, but.
Well, I don't, I don't know if I can motion to approve my own minutes. I think they're pretty good. My motion to approve the minutes.
A second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Uh.
Yes.
Okay. So, I don't really have any comments, um. Excepting for the things that you may be here for that are actually on the agenda. By the way, there are attendants at the back there.
Oh, good, yeah.
Anybody want to?
No.
Yeah.
So if, if the public want to make any comments not related to this, then.
Proceed.
Okay. So for this whole business, um, there's still no action on this Southwest joint comprehensive plan. So that's just hanging there. And I think at least everybody in this group, we had submitted a suggested change for ordinances dealing with, um, affordable housing and specifically with, um,
accessory development.
accessory development units. And at this point, supervisors, because they have other business on their agenda right now, have chosen to postpone any action on that until February. So that's just hanging there.
Was there, um, was there anything, you know, if we had discussed some other possible ordinance, things to, you know, to see if they needed changes? Or updates, you know, such as.
I'm, I'm still thinking that. I haven't done anything because I know it won't get dealt with right.
Okay.
I, I think probably, given all the holidays, we'll probably try to jump on that in January.
Okay, okay. Cause I just know that the ADUs was one of different things we were looking at to see if there was something, some revisions.
To go back and review some of those.
So that would just be stacked on it. Okay, I'll just keep it on, on minutes then for my upstairs. Um, cause we had talked about a lot of things.
Yeah, we were just taking a look at see where the ordinances may be a little bit weak. There's things like data centers that are popping up all over the place, um.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
And I think we had a couple thoughts on if there might be updates needed to the solar farm.
Right, just kind of, we got a solar one, but maybe there's something that needs to be updated with that, so we're gonna take a look at some of those things.
The tent.
Um. So with that, we can move to the Andrew Bito Bullfrog Road Plan. And Dominic, I'll let you go ahead and just kind of.
Well, Lee's here, he might as well present the plan. Okay. Well, we submitted the plan, Mitch had had talked to somebody who said he'd acre have lots. Well, that's option two. And so as we got into option two. As we get into option two, we created two lots, which are, because we started out with three acres, we're an acre and a half to start with. But then you get into option two, and so what it requires you to do is you have to take off the right of way, which is twenty five feet from the center of the road on both lots, which reduces the lot area down. And then you have to take off twenty five percent slopes. Now, lot one doesn't have anything else but the right of way. But then you have twenty five percent slopes, and you have fifteen to twenty five percent slopes. And then that reduces your lot down to, where is it there? On lot two, down to one point four acres. Then you, well, then you take off the constrained land, which is the slope, which gets you down to one point two acres. Then you take, then the conservation area is eighty percent of that, which is one point one acres. So you end up with about point two four development acres. But what happens is when you take all the constrained lands out, option two requires, after you take all this stuff out, to still have an acre and a half. We don't have. So your ordinances, you'd have to have, this would have to be like five acres, like two lots, at least. Depending on constrained lands and all that. So we've gone through this exercise. And your ordinances just tell.
So by, by how much is it too little? I mean, how, how much would you need? Like, is it, you said it's too, you have a too small area for the building, my question.
Well, it does, yeah, it really, yeah, I'm not sure how to deal with these in conservation areas. But it reduces us down point two four acres of usable property, starting out with an acre and a half.
And what would be the minimum you would need?
So, well, yeah, it, you start off with an acre and a half, and you take the right of ways off it.
Again, yeah, no, I, I followed all that. Then you said this area is too small. I'm just wondering, by, is it a lot too small or just a bit too small?
Okay, so that gives you. Well, that gives you down to.
She, she's, what's the minimum development area you need?
Well, it doesn't have anything to do with that.
Oh, doesn't, okay.
The, the regulations say that you need an acre and a half after the adjusted tract area.
Okay, got it.
So once you take the adjusted tract area off, you're down to one, yeah, you're down to one point two on lot two, and then.
Yeah, sorry, pardon.
One one six.
One point one one six on lot, well, excuse me a minute, my news is running.
Just, oh man, I can't sign it.
No, yeah.
So what happens, is there approximately three tenths of an acre and four, about seven tenths of an acre short of land? Nothing, there's nothing this board can do.
On one, I'm, I'm asking a question, just, just only asking a question. So I've seen people build houses on a quarter acre of land. I'm confused on why you couldn't build a house on, what, or like after all, everything, Lee, you're saying that the developmental land is what size lot?
Two.
Point two four.
Two, yeah. Well, it's not that you can't build a house there. It's the requirement that after you take off the slopes and the right of way.
Why do you have to take slopes off?
It's their.
Why can't you cut it down?
That's because their ordinance says.
It, partly it's because of the way it's zoned.
Hmm.
Well, it's conservation area, right?
There's not.
Well, it's a conservation, but it has to do with your adjusted tract requirements. It, it is, it's very difficult to understand if, it's, but that's what.
But the thing is, when they do quarter acre lots, a lot of the time that's a big development, that, is it, it falls in a different category.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not that you physically couldn't build a house, you could.
Yeah.
It's, the zoning requires you can do conservation by design, which requires typically larger lot sizes.
So I guess, let me ask another question. If I was trying to subdivide this and just make another tract a plant, without putting the house on it, that would work either?
You still could do that. No.
Okay.
Now, the issue you're running into is the zoning ordinance. When I say this board can't help is, we can't supersede the zoning ordinance. The only thing, you, you have basically three options. One, you could challenge the zoning officer's determination. With all due respect, I don't think you're gonna win on that one.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't know the ordinances, I don't know what the ordinance of this township even is.
Yeah. With, or you could petition the board of supervisors to change the ordinance. Now, I'm not saying that they will, I'm not saying that they won't, but they're not, they can't just change the ordinance for your property. It would have to be a major change throughout the entire ordinance, and I don't know if they're at the, they asked us to do stuff and they just told us to postpone. Or the third option is to go to the zoning beharing board and ask for a waiver or a variance of some of these requirements. The biggest issue, and I'm not, again, I don't speak for them, don't know what they'll say, biggest issue you're gonna have to do is show you have a hardship that's not self-created.
Understood.
Okay? And when you go to subdivide, typically that's a self-created hardship. But those are your three options. Um, there is nothing, anybody, as much as we could say, we want you to do it or whatever, there's nothing any of us can do. We cannot supersede the zoning ordinance.
Understood.
So unless I'm, unless you disagree with what I'm saying.
Got it.
I, no, we, Mitch and I are talking about this, and that, that we wanted to bring it to here to get a final word. I guess for my future, the county said that if we take this in conservation and this in conservation, and this in conservation, they didn't even like that.
But what, what are you saying?
Conservation, if, I mean, you have to.
You have to conserve the land and it'll never be subdivided or anything else.
You have to, this much brush here, and this much brush there, or?
No, like, I mean, you have three acres, but if you had, let's say, ten acres, and you did this subdivision, you may only get two lots, and then you may only be able to build on like a small portion of it, and the rest has to stay what we call conserved, i.e. green space or farmland.
Well, it's shit. It's all shit, but, okay.
I, trust me, I know what your property is.
It's all shit. It's what it is, it's shit.
Well, what if we took it all out?
You can't just rip it out.
Well.
It's not gonna change the zone.
Even if you do, it's not gonna change.
The only thing that's gonna help you is if you talk to your neighbor, they give you about three quarters of an acre of land, three quarters to an acre, three quarters to an acre.
Yeah, you need another acre. And hopefully it wouldn't be constrained lands, cause if it went, if it went up there, it might, an acre may not even do it.
Yeah.
I don't understand.
What if it would even, like, even go on to?
Twenty five feet across the road, you could build a, what, a house?
I think that's, it might be zoned differently, I forget.
How, that much difference, twenty five feet?
It's all conservation.
No, he said.
No, it's not, it's not, approved, it's not conservation.
Oh, it's not, no, but yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, it's like, that little piece that I had is the only, well, even the map that you guys have here is not.
What's our little map? I was gonna say, where's our little map?
Don't show conservation.
Oh, it doesn't show that, uh?
Maybe that don't.
There must be kind of a map which shows all those consequences.
It only shows the, like, do you have a map in here?
There it is.
Yeah, that one.
Well, not home.
And it's not correct. But, hey, I mean, the other guy that was here, uh, I can't remember his name. He's the one that gave me the, uh, application the first time. He was like, there's no conservation there, we can borrow it.
It's maybe going up.
He said, yeah, there's no conservation there. It's only up on, uh, Jacob Shurford. It's only conservation we have now, count.
That's what he told us.
Okay.
That's why we did the perks.
Well. Which I made twice for perks, because we stacked.
Four perks.
There's a whole.
So now I got the fourth one.
Well, like that one, he said that your main theme would be because it's all territory.
Yeah. I mean, it's fine.
We, we can't.
Understood, understood, a hundred percent. I'm not trying to get hostile, I'm just trying to make sense of everything.
You're frustrated, but just, we sit here and study and ponder and it's still very complicated.
They shouldn't, you can, you can, you can't, because.
Right there's Bullfrog. This is all Charnita, and across the street from them, or Catty Corner, I should say.
Jordan.
Is, yeah, you're getting into Charnita lots.
Charnita lots are the conservation.
That's, no, that's zone residential. Okay.
Exactly. Across from me where the, which, which.
Exactly.
Uh, like.
You said cross, right?
I, I know from here. It might be straight across McLaughlin as well, but it might, I'm thinking it's diagonal from Bullfrog.
Where, where Paul Killip and, uh.
There's ten lots.
Like, where Beck that built all these houses.
Get, get to build every fucking thing, excuse my French.
Um, those are all residential, which is all.
And he also wrote this more on.
Now, if you border, now, if you border residential, and it's really hard telling on this map, I have a photocopy of a photocopy, so it's, it's difficult for me to tell.
Hmm.
If you border residential zone.
Hmm.
Maybe it shows in the show, too.
Where is that? Okay, maybe that's.
So, is it?
That's what I was thinking, is if you're on the edge of one, I can U I across the road, then one.
Is it Bullfrog? So anything toward one.
Do you blow that up?
It's, nobody's gonna tell me where the conservation actually is, like, uh, never seen an actual real map of it.
Okay, come here, we'll show you.
Yeah, he's pulling it up online from the county.
Okay.
I'm gonna see it.
Yeah.
So here's your property.
You're doing, you're doing.
That's your property, that's great, that's a conservation zone, okay? Right here is residential zone.
Hmm.
Okay? Now, I don't, I didn't look at the residential zone. I guess you have a fourth option, but it sort of goes back to the other option. You could ask the board of supervisors.
Which is it?
Well, there's one of them, Nikki Barlow and Bobby Tybalt. But you would have to go to a meeting. You can ask them to do a zoning map change and ask them to make your property residential. But I would also ask Lee to look into the zoning ordinance and see if he could still do what you wanna do if it's zoned residential before you ask for that.
Yeah. Well, I guess that question to you is, would, would it work? I mean.
I, I don't know, that's what I'm saying, I don't know. I haven't looked into residential zoning district. We don't have much residential, and everything we do have is all Charnita lots. Um.
And I'm not sure.
And I'm not the zoning officer.
I'm not sure they can change this one.
They could, because they would be attached to here, so it would not be spot zoning.
Yeah, it wouldn't be spot zone. It would just be expanded residential, right?
Right.
Yeah, you could do that, with supervisors or someone. But I don't know, we're still.
So residential zone.
Yeah, if it's residential, you have to make sure it's still.
Okay. No public water, no public sewer, minimum lot size is one acre, with a hundred feet road frontage.
We got that.
We got that.
Okay? Um. That's, that's just looking at this really quick. That's, that's what I've said.
We don't get into all the other stuff?
Um, I'm not looking at that right now.
It's all the other stuff that travels the process.
Well, you should, you shouldn't get into the conservation by designs, because now you're residential.
Right.
At least I don't think you do. Um, cause residential's pretty, it's already considered to be small lots. So you don't even have like options one, two, three.
Okay.
You, what you have is public water, public sewer, neither.
Right.
So that's, so there is no, right. So there is no option one, do this, option two, option three, option four. So if you can somehow convince the board supervisors to let your property get zoned as residential, it would not be spot zoning since you border residential.
Right.
But that's an argument you have to make.
Hmm.
To the, the board of supervisors.
Well, it's not residential now, that is.
What's, what's it cost?
You're zoned conservation, you're not zoned residential.
The front of it's done, the front.
Your whole, your whole property, right, the, the, the border is McLaughlin Road. So everything across the street from you and McLaughlin up to Water Street is residential. Everything McLaughlin on your side back is zoned conservation.
So what does it cost to ask to, request a rezone?
I think, I think, I don't, cost, I don't know. I think you just ask Wendy to put you on the supervisor's agenda and go up there and talk to them, and if they want you to pay for it, then I don't know. If they don't, I mean, I have no idea what they're gonna say.
All right.
Um, it's not like it's a standard, like.
So this case, this case with Abby Supervisor here?
No, you go to the board of supervisors, you ask them, the three of them will make the decision, and, you know. Or give anyone to actually make a formal request.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do you have a question I have is why would, if you knew all this, why would you make me get paid?
Fourth. Several years, several years ago.
Sandbound. Park test to pay for, why would I?
Several years, several years ago, when your father came to me with the first time, I said, Mitch, are you sure you can meet zoning? And he told me yes.
Yeah, but, I mean, I don't think that he, he's not on like the, the whole township committee, like, you guys are asking for my money to do these perks.
I, I, I understand.
And you know this, that we're coming to a meeting for now.
I'm at.
And now all of a sudden, even if you're not the zoning officer, like, I'm, I'm confused on why I have to, like, I, I spent this money, right?
I understand.
And now we come to a meeting, and now you know this?
I.
Confused. I'm just confused, that's all.
I understand. At, at the time, Mitch, I don't sit there and look at all the zoning and all, I had to.
Understood, understood.
And, and I, I did, I knew it was a small piece of land, and I asked him, I said, are you sure you can meet zoning? And he said, yeah, we're residential, we're fine.
I didn't tell you that.
I asked you if you can meet zoning. You said you're fine.
I said, you said to me what we was trying to do. We said we might try to make another lot.
I, I understand it, and I sent to you.
It is what it is. For now, it is what it is. It's just, like, I understand it's a now, it's a now, cool.
I mean, I'm not trying to waste your money, I'm not trying, I'm, I'm.
No, no, well, it does, but it is what it is.
I, I took that as a.
Well, it might have been the kind of thing, I mean, I don't know, I have to, but I mean, it might have been the kind of thing that until you looked at it and, and Lee did all the calculations, you didn't know.
Well, there's only one other thing I'd wanna bring up, okay? So out there at that half, at that problem, uh, you know, the pipes that get on the road are so damn blocked up, and the water lays in my yard, and nobody does anything about it, which is the township's.
That, that's another thing.
D. You know, that's your guys' stuff, so I'm gonna go pay for all this.
Put all the water pipe across Bullfrog Road, and then fix McLaughlin Road.
It's frustrating, it's really frustrating. At least you guys know my lid, and I brought it up. Sorry, not trying to be hostile towards anybody. However, it is kind of frustrating whenever I'm asking for something, but I can't get it.
Oh, yeah.
But you know, the township, they can do whatever they want, so it's just, I don't know. But, hey.
The townships meets the fir-, the supervisors meet the first Tuesday, so.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Wednesday, yes.
Oh, that's right, my bad. So December third at six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
December third at six o'clock.
On township, isn't this township, you?
This is.
No.
Playing.
This is.
You just recommend.
Yeah.
We don't.
Yeah, we don't even, we can't even decide anything.
December third.
Other than ending immediately.
December third or fourth zone?
December Wednesday, December third.
Six o'clock.
At six o'clock.
You told it Wednesday?
Yeah, they changed it to Wednesday.
They moved on to Wednes from Tuesday nights to Wednesdays.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So if someone needs to call Wendy, get her, get you added to the calendar.
I'll do that tomorrow. I'll do that tomorrow.
Uh, I'll be with the other two sit down, I'll mention on the water road, uh, drugs issue.
That, that, that would be, I'm so glad you came, Chris.
What's your name? What's that?
What's your name?
Hill, Chris Hill.
Chris Hill, and you're a supervisor?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'm here to listen.
Gotcha.
Just listen, listen, I'm here for your.
Hopefully you hear it.
Yeah, no, I do, that's why I'm here.
Yeah, we are, everybody's trying to balance.
I'm here for you, how.
Unless you were.
And if you go on that.
We addressed all the calls, but I don't think.
Yeah, no, we're just, we're gonna table it, um.
Right. Okay.
I mean, if you get positive information from the supervisors, I would put in an extension for this.
Yeah.
Cause you, we have to get the zoning through first.
Right.
It's not, it, it's not a hard change to make if they're in favor of it, but you know, it's just time consuming it'll take, you know.
Just time. Yeah, advertise it for forty-five days and all.
All that stuff, yes.
Okay, well, that's worth a shot, we're not out of the woods.
No, it's prob- I mean.
If it happens, it happens, yeah.
It's probably easier to go to supervisors than to, to the zoning hearing.
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even try that, but.
Has it ever happened, like, that situation ever happened before and it passed?
Yeah.
What?
I mean, ask them for a map change.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure we're not wasting time.
No, well, that's not gonna cost you, I mean, it's not gonna cost you anything.
It's not, it's not.
The zoning hearing board, there's a fee for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, zoning hearing board would cost you give or take a thousand dollars and. Yeah, the board of supervisors, you're just asking.
Yeah.
So, um. I mean, considering you're only three acres and you're currently just a residential property, I think Lee can make an argument for you. Not saying, I, I don't speak for the board, they, they will make their own decision, but you do border residential zone properties, so it wouldn't be spot zoning. It would be map change.
Yeah.
I'm gonna still leave over here.
We're not out of the woods yet, bud.
We're still in the woods.
We're still in the woods, well, yeah.
Thank you guys very much, appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Didn't mean to be hostile, just trying to voice my opinion, that's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You all have a good turkey day. I promise if I present that to you.
Very much, appreciate it, guys.
Yeah. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Everybody, uh.
Thank you, you too.
You should make a motion to table the plan. Someone should make a motion to table the plan.
I make a motion that we table the plan. Secondly. Do I have to say until when?
No, because it'll be on next month's agenda.
Okay.
No, we got the table.
Okay.
All in favor? Uh, alright. Yeah, I'm not sure how to view the rezoning, but if I precipitate other boardroom properties to what it goes in direction.
But that's, he has four options.
It may, um. I mean, he really only has three options, he still would petition the board for a change, but instead of a, a watching call change, it'd be a change of the, the map.
Just move it, yeah.
Can we own that, Don, we own the map, we can change the map?
Do you own? Um. Technically, yes, but I doubt, maybe Wendy has it, I, my office did not generate the map.
Yeah.
Okay, maybe county can generate it for you, um, I mean, I, I can generate it for you.
I'm talking about changing the, uh, the, the zone from, uh, conservation to, uh, residential.
Yeah, that's, you can easily do that.
Yeah, you can do it, but I think the only thing you have to look at is this, the zoning is partly based on the joint comprehensive plan where we've agreed to how things are divided up.
It's not.
That's right.
Yeah.
And, but I don't think that's a big obstacle necessarily, but.
You just have to generate.
You, you need to look at what the philosophy in the plan is to make sure to.
I mean, if you, if you ask me as a planner, as your township representative for, as engineer, it makes sense. It's a three acre lot.
Yeah.
Now, he wants to do it to subdivide, I get that, but it's a three acre lot, it's not a, it's not like his neighbors who have way more land than that and literally across the street.
Did you just get the map there?
Yeah, no, I looked on my phone, I saw it, it's all residential, it was like true residential across the street.
Right, across the street is all those small chariot lots that, you know, um, and they're not all, I mean, they're half acre lots, but. It's not like they're house, 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 most of them are two or three owned per house.
Absolutely. Yeah.
So it, it doesn't, I don't think it would affect the neighborhood whatsoever, it's, you know, um, it's too small to really farm one.
It's definitely too small to farm one.
Yeah, um, so as a, as a, as a planner, as, you know, representing as, you know, engineer, I, we went up jack to it by any means.
Yeah.
Um, but I can't say that, like.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
That's, that's for Lee to.
Well, Mickey and Bobby are coming with any preconceived actions either, so we'll see.
Yeah. I, I've been waiting for him to yell at me about this.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I, I, I told Mitch years ago, I said, are you sure you can do this? I said, you really, yeah, 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 look, and he pointed across the street, start looking, they're all residential, he said, oh, okay, you know.
You sure you?
And at that time, I don't know how much land people own, like just.
No, and he didn't know the slopes.
I, I had to be.
Right.
And, but he did, he spent a lot of money, I mean, I get it, he can.
I did, I actually, I love to tell myself really well when you're frustrated like that.
He can yell, I mean, I get it.
You must have a lot of folks like that, they're not here because that, you've done a great job. You're making my life so easy.
No, there's, most of the people we deal with are very appreciative.
Oh, really, that's good, although I got a, uh, a little bit of a salty one.
Yeah, but I mean, understandably, it takes a long time, people spend money, you, you understand, you know, you don't, like you said, you don't know the zoning, you don't know how it works. And people say this, but I think you're like still thinking, that's my land, I'm just gonna do this thing, what's the problem?
The biggest thing though is I work for the township.
Yeah.
So if I would tell them, you can one hundred percent do this, he spent the money and then couldn't do it. He could turn around and look at them and say, you owe me money because you, basically I speak for a township.
You can't, yeah.
I can't, I said, you know, I used to do that in all my townships with all people and sometimes it's egregious where I'm like, I'm telling you, you cannot do this, I wouldn't do this if I were you. But I can't tell people, yeah, you can do things, you know, because I can speak for them and it's just, and I, I try to say like.
Hi, it's just all of us, someone told them that they could do this before they came to me.
Yeah, it wasn't me.
I, I, no, 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 I don't think, no, it wasn't you.
I'm gonna say it.
It wasn't you, I don't, I don't think it's anybody in this room, but whoever they talked to said, yeah, you can do this, cause I questioned it from the get-go. Three acres with all that road frontage, it's like, this is no work, but they were held out on doing it because they were told by somebody. So it was somebody here in the township, but I don't know who, cause they never told me, but. If, 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 if you find out who told them that, you should tell them, don't say that anymore.
Well, good luck with that.
So I don't, I don't know, I just felt as though I had to tell somebody that, it was, so I'll keep my fingers crossed supervisors do that, but we'll see, yeah. Okay, yeah, still have a good turkey day.
Okay, thanks.
Have a good one. Okay, so the golden wood one, from what I get, or from reading the comments, is they owe us a lot of stuff.
Yes.
And we really, this is another thing to just table.
Right, right, just table on that, it's, I know county and I think the zoning officer issued comments, we then issued comments because they didn't provide us all the stormwater, so. And this one, typically if it was, if it was them, a subdivision, we'd say, ah, don't worry about stormwater, we'll get comments later. But because it's land development, all the stormwater stuff is in the plan itself, we have yet to be able to actually get, or we're just gonna do a review and say, here, meet the entire ordinance, you know. Um, so we will, we will have comments one way or another for December's meeting on it.
This one was a kennel that was built on track road and they came and we did. Basically reviewed their initial plan and things like that.
Yeah, they were proved.
But, but then they went, and then they went and overbuilt, they went beyond the bounds.
Right. Uh. They, they overbuilt and then when they called us up to, so they could get their security back, they called us up, we had to do a inspection on the stormwater facilities and stuff like that. And when we went out there, it was pretty obvious that they overbuilt.
By how much? That much, ooh, so it wasn't like a, oops?
It wasn't, no, oh, you got a hundred square feet more, we're talking maybe like fifty percent more.
Oh, shoot, nah.
Um, that, that doesn't mean it's all building, there was an additional building that shouldn't have been there, but a lot of it was more like parking and.
Yeah.
And driveways that were just, everything was just bigger.
Yeah.
Um, but there was building as well, um, so we sort of said.
So they have to redo the stormwater plan again?
They have to, yeah, just, yeah, because again, cause stormwater is part of the land development plan and that's what's in the courthouse, record it and none of it matches.
Oof, try and sell that bad boy.
So. So after discussions, it was, you have to basically resubmit the plan. And, um, get the new plan, record it, and give us all the new calculations for stormwater and everything else and, I mean. Sort of like starting at the beginning, but everything's already built, so I better hope they built it correctly.
Yeah, this is, this is why I'm really having been about getting a zoning enforcement officer here, cause it's, uh, cause you gotta be, or we haven't done a very, we're, we're not getting what we need from the, uh, from the, the other guys.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. It's an, it's an issue, yeah. Cool.
So, somebody wanna move to table the golden wood?
Yeah, glad you're sending out, waving to all these papers, yes.
So you motion second move? Is it second?
Second, second, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so at that point, we're at the bottom of the agenda, the only thing left is adjournment, unless somebody has other things that they wanna bring up. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm moving to adjourn immediately.
Okay, wait one second, if so, we actually.
One second. One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chris, do you have another question?
No, no, I can walk up to more of these, I think it's, uh, it's, you know, it's a pillar of what we do, right? It was only permitting an infrastructure.
And, and I would say for the most part, our meetings, those chairs are empty, like, other than maybe.
Yeah.
An engineer that's representing the client or something like that, we don't feel they probably turn up for this, not that supervisors do.
Yeah, right, oh, yeah, we, we get around, but, of course, I have a, a, a good staff around the GIS and cartography and, and also, uh, infrastructure, those are ideas.
So, especially today, I think it was good that a supervisor was here.
Yeah, now you understand.
To see, and, and have a, before they come in.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know what they're set about and what, yeah, what options were laid out for them.
What, maybe we're.